All right. Good morning, and I would like to call to order the Concord School Committee. And with that, I would like to open our public hearing on the superintendent's recommended FY25 budget. I see in the audience on Zoom that Carlin is here. Carlin, if you wouldn't mind for me to ask you directly, we are happy to present again for you, but we all noted that you were also present on Tuesday at our meeting where Bob Conry presented the budget in full. We are happy to redo that for you, or we are happy to begin to move into some questions by our own members. You're only an audience member.
What an honor. Carlin Reed, AD3 with SANTA, a member of the Finance Committee, but speaking on my own behalf, I will have a couple of questions for CPS, but also for CCRSD. But let's start out with what's the difference between FinCom's guidelines and CPS's guidelines? And what do you think about that difference?
I can name the delta and I'll let others weigh in on the feedback. It's just under $90,000 different at CPS. I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in on the other part of the question?
I can speak a little bit to CPS. I think, I think what you're going to see differently, like from what I've, again, speaking from what I've personally seen in the budget, you know, last year, we spoke quite a bit about maintaining a level service budget. And, you know, this year, and I think we'll talk through some of this. This year, it's a little different. There are, there are some, some cuts in this budget. So there are obviously cuts that the superintendent feels comfortable with. But I think, you know, our delta obviously was nearly half a million dollars last year. We have sought, or the superintendent has sought to really make a dent in, you know, levels of spending that the Finance Committee is comfortable with and maintaining programs and services to our students. Interestingly, I met yesterday with, geez, six or so chairs from other districts. We meet, we host a roundtable of other school committee chairs. Yesterday, we met, there were a bunch of, of, of local chairs present, one of which was the Acton School Committee Chair. And for them to maintain their level service budget this year, they're coming in at 10%. So, you know, I think a three-point, I forget the exact number that we're at.
3.4.
Four is, demonstrates, you know, a lot of fiscal restraint and attention this year. That's my personal opinion, but I welcome anyone else to interpret.
3.4 is the Concord, 3.42 is the Concord increase. The, the overall regional increase is 3.2.
Yeah, we're going to do the region in a separate.
Anyone else have opinions?
I, I think I'll have a better opinion after today, honestly. Because I know that there are a lot of really good questions about the budget that we'll talk about, including some of my own. So I don't know that I have a good answer right now, but it is a fair question.
And, and again, I think coming off my meeting yesterday where I was, where we were alarmed, I mean, when.
I talked to the superintendent in Acton last night. They've had an insurance significant problem. They've been self-insured and that went belly up this fall and special ed costs. The two together is a perfect storm. Yeah, really. They're going for overrides in both communities.
I do have a concern if our COLAs are significantly higher than budgeted, so I'm wondering how we're going to accommodate that.
If in our subsequent negotiation, it's interesting, actually. So Dorothy Presser, our MASC rep, was present. And we were, as a group, talking about sort of challenges with exactly that. We were talking about specifically challenges with, I think we're the only community that presents five-year projections to our Finance Committee, but sort of the challenge is inherent with that. And one of the things that Dorothy mentioned was, because we were, we were talking about the pros and cons, mostly cons, about giving such long, five-year projections to a Finance Committee, because it does sort of impede your ability to negotiate in good faith, especially in years four and five, when you're outside, like your current contract. And then Dorothy was saying, but then we were talking about, but, you know, in this year too, you have to bring a budget before you negotiate. So what Dorothy had talked about was typical practice would be, you know, if there's enough work done, you can kind of see what, 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 what we're thinking of a range in this budget. And then you focus your negotiations on years two and three.
I'm talking about this year. If it doesn't come in, whatever we have in our budget.
Right. Well, then, well, I think what Dorothy's recommendation is, as you negotiate, you say, we are bound to this number. Years two and three are really where we should focus. That is sort of, again, this was sort of her advice, talking to a bunch of chairs, you know.
We've done that before successfully, but I'm wondering if we're not successful in that regard, what will we do?
I prefer to answer in exact session.
Okay, well, FinCom is going to ask that question.
And we're going to have to be careful.
I think you have to be careful because we have to bargain in good faith.
I understand.
But isn't this always the question?
Contingency, so I'm saying, in our budget, for that case.
Well, I guess my question is, my question to the last bargaining team, like, this was clearly the same situation. It's always the same situation.
Of some kind in our budget.
Three years ago, we had contingency in that.
I don't know. I prefer to the.
I mean, I would say we wouldn't want to discuss.
Yeah, I think we can't really discuss this.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy to talk through all this in exact session. Yeah, I think that's much a better place for it.
Here we are at a budget hearing. I think the good, the good news is anybody who wants to listen in now or later knows we're attentive to this and know what's going on. Notwithstanding the fact that we won't take it all up in public session.
Because there's other public information that, you know, in fact, today in our MASC newsletter, state receipts are dramatically down. So we, that budget might not even hold that we're counting on for, you know, monies. So we got, maybe we'll have a local problem. So I just, you know, I think we're having some real headwinds in our economy. Good news is slowing down some. Inflation is going down, but then it has other repercussions. So I think it's good news that we're so close to the guideline, but I think we're heading into an era where we're going to need to start really looking at the budget.
I feel like we've already been in that era. We've been absorbing 20% inflation and electricity costs. And we've been doing all of that. So it's always been a moving piece. So specific to bargaining, we can talk in exact session.
What I hear you saying is things are likely to be more difficult. We've got to account for that right now.
Right. The state has been very flush with cash the last couple of years, and I think that's turning around, unfortunately. So, okay, but we'll move on.
Carlin, do you have any other questions? I see you.
Not about CPS, but I do about CCRSD. Thank you.
Get to that shortly.
And just for clarity, Carlin, did you want to hear the presentation again? I think originally we were talking about that. Or are you good from the other night?
Personally, I'm good from the other night, and I have it bookmarked. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a, a request just going forward for the, the ease of our work. If we could, on the line items that you provide, Bob, if you could check the titling on them, because we've got some problems there. And also, if we can number the pages, it'd be super useful for conversations. All right.
Yeah, if you want to send me an example of a couple of line items, I can take a look at those. But the pages is, yeah, sure.
No, no, it's the titling. We've got one that's titled Fiscal 24, but it's indeed Fiscal 25. We've got another one that doesn't have a title, the region. So it's minor, it's fussy, but.
I think those are file headers that we.
Exactly. Thank you. But because they go public, we might as well clean them up. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, so at this point, we do have 20 minutes remaining in our hearing. If it's appropriate, we certainly can pivot to questions of our own. So we can be efficient with timing and not wait till our, you know, budget meeting. If that's appropriate.
So we have a list of questions already that's been circulated.
So I can turn it over.
Start there and see where it goes after that.
And we're going to do the capital budget as well in the hearing?
In our budget meeting.
And we didn't, we never talked about the capital budget, you know, until later this morning. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Why would we talk about it at the hearing, though? Okay, for our budget, right?
Sure.
I mean, it's part of our budget. It's a separate.
We generally haven't done that, but we can certainly do it.
Whatever the chairs want.
Just focus, we just want to focus on CPS for, until 9:30.
You want to start with the operating budget? One of the questions was to ask, provide grant detail. I can have a handout for that.
Can you send us all the material as well?
I will. Some of this was just created.
Okay.
We've had, what, 36 hours since we made?
Yeah, right.
No, I said these questions.
Yeah, we've given ourselves a pretty, pretty rough timeline on.
I actually like the momentum from last Tuesday hearing to this morning. It just.
Project this for Carlin. So we had created a document at the end of, okay, at the end of FY23. One of the things that we're asked to do when we closed that FY23 was to report on all of our grant expenditures, all of our grants, what our sources were, what they used for. So we've taken that template and created this summary, which we'll kind of use going forward in our budget processes. So these are FY24 grant awards for each of our grants for both districts. We're only talking about CPS now, but so we've listed that. Our uses are essentially the same as in prior years. The grants that we're receiving are essentially the same. We haven't yet heard back on a couple of competitive grants, but these are the ESSA, which is the Title I, Title II, and Title IV grants, and the IDA in early childhood. Those are the entitlement grants that we receive every year. The funding levels on these is fairly consistent. I will say the Title IV for CPS increased. It was previously 10,000. Title I dropped significantly. What we're seeing in FY24 and what we're planning for 25, 80,000 is in line with what we've received in prior years. We saw a spike a year ago. We didn't spend all those funds, so that's helping offset this drop this year. The Metco grant funding is pretty steady. And then we received the teacher diversification. It's not a pilot anymore. I should change the name of that. We received a teacher diversification follow-up grant to support recruiting and retaining diverse staff. Those amounts are a little bit more than the last time we applied, 34,000 for CPS, or just under 35. And we also have a grant that's specifically for, it's a new IEP in special ed that requires some training, some implementation, and we need to modify our, our forms. And so that's a little bit more targeted and specific, and will be used specifically for that. So those are our grants and.
Can I just add, there's a couple others we're actively working on or waiting on both. We've submitted for high-quality materials for middle school math to potentially offset some of the cost of the new program. We're waiting to hear on that. And we're actively working on the Metco special ed grant that we mentioned the other night. So I think we're doing a good job of keeping up as things are, they're not always well-publicized when they get posted. So we've been really staying close to all our contacts and different groups and making sure we know when things are available.
Sorry, when will you, for FY25, when will you hear what the grant numbers will be? Like, is there a specific timing, or is it different for all of them?
Maybe it's some of the entitlement grants, I think, might be June.
But standardly, these are ones that we just get every year.
The entitlements we get every year. Everything else is based on application.
And so most of, what's on this list, the last two on the second page, are grants that are kind of new, newish, the teacher diversification grant we did get last year as well. But those are more targeted and competitive grants.
Are they more, like, obviously one of the two-year diversification when we got placed, but is this IEP one a one-time grant?
Yeah, it's one time. I mean, if there's follow-up work, it's basically to get districts up to speed on the new IEP and get staff trained. And that will go away. And other competitive ones come up, the math one, we hope to get, but we don't know if we're going to receive that. I think we assume we have a good chance of getting the Metco special ed one, assuming that that moves forward and the funding's there. So, but we are going to completely bank on, on that.
Are most of the grants that we pursue state-level grants?
Managed by DESI, through the federal government to DESI. So we applied to DESI, but that.
Bob, are these numbers, with the exception of the IEP grant, being carried forward for anticipated revenues?
Correct, correct.
And are you keeping it flat, like same amount, or are you?
Relatively flat, a little nominal growth. There hasn't, I mean, so, for example, Title I decreased versus last year by a fair chunk. The IDA grant has been steadily increasing by a very small amount. I should also add to, so that's to answer your question, anticipated small growth. I also wanted to point out that Title I and IDA, not all of that money is spent in district. We also have an obligation, and then a requirement on the grants to spend a share of those funds on home schooled and private school students. So I think that's about 30,000 on the IDA grant. I don't know the number off the top of my head on the Title I, but it's much smaller.
The one thing we've watched with Title I at all, that one is based on the, the number of students who qualify under the Title I categorizations. So there have been years where that's dropped off. The high school's not qualified every year, depending on the enrollments and who's in what category. So we're always trying to look at our student standing and project that. It's more stable at CPS, given the bigger district.
Do we think that shelter will have any impact on that?
Yes.
To increase in funding?
It may, yes. So those students certainly qualify in the category of need, is eligible for Title I.
Any other questions on grants?
I'm waiting to see, answer other questions that I had, like the preschool budget, so then I will. I have other questions, but it might be answered.
So actually, so maybe would it make sense then for members to?
I'll let you go.
What?
We're just jockeying on who's doing screen sharing.
Members to take the time, sort of to go through their questions. We could, we're happy to start with you, if you have.
The preschool budget was one of my questions.
Okay, what about it?
What is the preschool budget?
We've got all the questions gathered.
Well, no, I think, but I think.
It's been shared. So if you want to just act like widely.
Yeah, they haven't been shared, so I think it's important.
Administration has them.
I didn't come in prepared to repeat all my questions. I've got to go back and study them or.
Are they in an email that you can reference?
Well, if you forwarded them, then Bob has them, and maybe Bob can just take us through the, the questions he received and the material that he developed in response.
For CPS.
Wouldn't that be a better use of time if he already has them?
I'll pull them up so we can just talk to them. Sure. I, I do think, though, I think, I don't know, I think there is some value in, in even just for the public, sort of seeing what the mindset of all of our committee members and hearing what their questions are. I think there's some value in that.
Well, he can certainly attribute any of my questions to me.
Okay, whatever's most efficient.
Is there, is there a list of other questions?
I don't know. They went to Carrie.
Ultimately.
We have a document. I'm just going to share it with all of you and.
The budget proposal.
This is simpler.
Sure.
I just don't want to ask questions that are answered in the future. Answered to a question I had, you know what I'm saying? I could ask questions about the preschool based on the grants, but I, if there's a budget, you could show me, then I, that probably answered my questions.
So I'll.
I'm going to share the document you're looking at with them.
Up on the screen.
And he's going to, and he's going to screen share it. Perfect. Sorry. We weren't sure on how we wanted to do this, so we're trying to keep up with you.
Sorry about that. That's, that's probably our fault, because I thought that our process was going to be that if questions were going to come in, then people were going to ask their own questions in the meeting. So we have the information, but to ask their own questions.
Sorry, I thought that was in an email as well.
I think, I mean, I do think there is benefit to, if you have, if you have, like, we can share information, but if, if the question was yours to ask, then I think it should be asked.
That's fine. I just.
I was asked to submit in advance, so I certainly was happy to accommodate.
So we're looking at now our preschool budget.
So bear with me one second. What I'm going to do is, for our member in the audience, I'm going to put it on screen.
Someone else join too.
So this document I'm sharing was in response to a request to, to see our preschool budget specifically. And also to, and feel free to clarify if there's more, Cynthia, to highlight what the revenue sources were for the program. And so these are the line items that roll up into preschool. This budget includes teaching staff, OT, SLP, and they're all in the preschool teaching salary line. It also includes our aides and tutors. You can see that the, the main driver here of the increase is in the aide and tutor line. We've talked about in our presentation a couple nights ago that we added four. Two of those are to support the additional classroom that was added. Two of those are one-to-one support aides to students. We had some savings on a replacement hire for the school nurse. And the teaching salary represents an additional position. That additional position is offset slightly by one of the other positions, and OT being person retiring and being replaced by a .8 FTE. So that's netted in the preschool teaching line. Our revenues are flat. We budgeted 140,000 to be an offset. Actually, that 140 is embedded in the teacher salary line within the salary budget. We've put in $140,000 offset to teacher salary. We also use early childhood grant to offset a portion of teacher salary. The grant is just a tad higher than that, but we have a portion that we have to contribute to MTRS per state requirements. So those are the funding sources. You know, the majority of the, this is an integrated preschool. There are students who we charge and obtain fees for, and there are, there are many that we don't charge. And that's the required to provide services as we should for students who need certain supports. And so it is an integrated preschool. We do get some revenues that defray it for a portion of the students that are paying. So that's the kind of the big picture view of preschool. And, you know, we also have highlighted, you know, our concern about trying to manage when we don't have additional funding from the state for needs that might be related to the shelter here. And so that's kind of the, one of the challenge points we have as we, as we look forward.
It's a huge driver, 14%.
Can you remind us?
Needs are growing overall.
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 I mean preschool.
Can you give us a sense of the, the change in student population for referred students?
Numbers?
Yeah, the, the drive, the 40% and the 9.9%.
I don't have the numbers off in front of me. I can certainly get them in terms of the numbers of referrals. What I can speak to is that the number of students who are qualifying, there's often greater needs, more significant needs. We're picking them up earlier, which means they may be identified at age three. And sometimes, depending on when their birthdays are, they'll be in the preschool program for three years. So that's some of why you needed another classroom this year, because often we count on exits to kindergarten being the offset to the incoming students, and we didn't have enough kindergartners exiting to offset the incoming three-year-olds. So, so there's other days after September 1st, they, you know, they're there while they're, while they're six, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yes.
So if we don't have the rollover, then we have the increase, then we have the new classroom. I'm just curious, will you get a sense of, of numbers, a rough sense?
I can. I'll have to get it from them.
I assume it's driven by numbers.
Well, we get referrals from a whole number of places, early intervention.
Familiar results in children in a classroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I can.
More bodies.
Numbers. So I just wanted to go.
For the preschool aides and tutors, one-on-ones would go in there. So it's really is dependent upon needs of children.
Those are IEP-driven.
They're all mandated IEP one-on-one driven. Yeah, that's probably the increase.
Well, that's why I referenced it as referred, I mean, kids. Because I think it's important, if we want to bring these increases forward, we give people a rough sense of, of how we're changing our, our service capacity.
Yeah, I think the other thing I'll mention, sometimes a one-to-one is an option rather than an out-of-district placement.
Yes, yeah.
We do not, we do not place a student, very rare that we place a preschooler out of district. So we, we may have to add things here to make this program accessible.
Other than Minute Manarch, where do, I'm just curious, where do referrals sort of come from?
Well, early intervention is the formal process, because if students have been, if children are receiving services from birth through, early intervention, we have a very formal process, but otherwise it can come from the pediatrician can suggest the parent, right? A private preschool can suggest the parent, right? Sometimes a daycare center can suggest.
All of those things.
Anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I anticipated you might have questions on tuition rates. Just quickly, reference Carlisle. Actually did just a big overview of neighborhood tuitions locally as they were considering their tuitions. Carlisle's at $5,200 a year for a half-day program. I'll get to ours at the end. Acton Boxborough is at 7,070 for a full day. We have a rate for both, so I'll mention both. We're right in the middle of the pack. Littleton's at 5,500 for half-day. Maynard's at 20. I can send you this slide if you don't want to have to record it. 2,700 and 5,400, half and full day. Lyric, 1,600 and 3,200. Sudbury at 10,464 for half-day.
Oh, my God.
You may have. This is from a Carlisle presentation. I'm grabbing them right now.
They just looked it all up there.
Concord's, our current rate's 3,500 for half-day and 7,000 for full. Those haven't been reviewed in a long time. Seeing that we're right in the middle of the pack, I am not recommending you do that right now.
And that's just for gen, the general?
That's for the community students, yeah.
Is it school year?
Yeah, yeah. We run summer programming for special ed education preschoolers only. Any other preschool questions? We're certainly not alone in growing needs and ongoing management of how to accommodate them.
So no further questions on the preschool. I'll move on to some other items. One of the questions raised was questions about our student hardware. And I'll read the question and chime in if you.
So we're just doing CPS?
Yes, but, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I will just.
We could bring the regional hearing to order it.
Is Sharon on?
Sharon's on.
Oh, she is on. Great.
To follow your lead.
So we'll just go to the CPS hardware questions after the regional?
Yeah, we could do that.
That's good.
We'll stop just, just because it's 9:30, so I think we should call the hearing.
So are you going to close the CPS hearing?
We can't run them concurrent. Well, yeah, I guess, because no one in the, Ms. Reed.
I think we should, I think we should, well, you're the chair, but I think you should see if there are any questions from the public. Close the CPS hearing and then we'll open up the regional hearing.
Great. I see Catherine on these on Zoom. Catherine, before we close the Concord Public School Budget Hearing, do you have any questions that you might want to ask?
Thank you for asking. I don't at this time, but I appreciate listening in.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, I will close the budget hearing for the Concord Public Schools FY25 budget.
And I will call the Regional School Committee to. And I will call the Regional School Committee to order, and we'll do it by roll call vote.
Anderson present.
Who's present?
Morano present.
Randy present. Rankin present.
Wood present. And with that, I will open up the Concord Carlo Regional School District FY twenty-five budget hearing. So we, the other night, we had a budget presentation that is widely available on our website. It's attached to our agenda from Tuesday night. We had a lengthy budget presentation. So what we're going to do, if there's no opposition from the public, is just move into some questions on the region from members.
Or first, maybe the public.
Or the public. We can start with questions from the public and then move into questions from members. Okay, Carlin Reed.
Thank you, Carlin Reed, eighty-three Wits, and a member of the Finance Committee, but speaking on my own behalf. Two groups of questions. First one is, what is the delta between the FinCom guidelines and the regional guidelines? And I think it's without debt. I think that's the figure. And the second question, and how you feel about it, but the second group of question is about the the E and D account, excess and deficiency. I think the dollar amount that's been allocated, that is three hundred thousand dollars. How did you come up with that number? What's the purpose of the account? And why not something lower or something higher? So those are the two groups of questions I have. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Carlin. So to answer the first question, the delta between the budget and the Concord guideline without debt, you're correct to be that specific, just under two hundred and five thousand dollars. Bob is going to answer the E and D question.
The E and D, Carlin, E and D is the regional school equivalent of free cash. And we are able to use it to offset our operating budget or for other purposes, one-time purposes. We have been in recent years, and I don't know, I didn't look too far back, but we have used it to offset our operating budget. We have had some healthy balances and the three hundred thousand is level with what we did last year to create some budget stability. Over time, we might want to consider reducing that. We're very close to the cap. We're allowed to have a cap of five percent of our operating and capital budget of our E and D balance. Our E and D balance is ninety-eight percent of the cap. So we don't really have much room to grow there. And if we exceeded the cap, that would have to be returned and reduced in assessment reductions to the town. So we have the funds there to use them to offset the region's assessments to the town. So we're continuing to do so for now. If we saw that number decline, or if we saw some other one-time use, we might want to reduce that in our operating budget. We didn't feel like this was the year to do so.
Just historically, seven years ago, we were at six hundred plus thousand coming revenue from E and D for the budget, which was not sustainable. So we've made purposeful efforts to reduce it to something more manageable. And it eventually probably would love to reduce it further, but given the fiscal moving pieces, it makes more sense to leave it as is.
One quick follow-up. What's the total dollar amount in the E and D account?
The certified balance, this is going to be off the top of my head.
Point eight.
Point six million.
The presentation.
And we'll call it up in a second, Carlin, but it's certified at a little bit above one point six million at the end of FY twenty-two. We haven't certified yet for FY twenty-three, but we anticipate it going up to north of one point eight million. One point eight four million. Again, there's some details and offsets that the Department of Labor Local Services does that, that might not be exact, but we looked at our favorable revenues and our expenses were right on budget. So we're projecting a million eight forty-seven and change.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Right. Any other questions from the public before we go to questions from members? Okay. All right. So we do have some questions that were submitted from members, but I haven't seen all the questions. So what I would suggest in this meeting is let's just go through if you.
Should we close the hearing and then just go to our budget meeting?
If there are no other questions from the public?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the public? Just use the raise hand feature or you can unblock your screen. Okay, then I will close the regional budget hearing. And we will go on to questions from members. Now, do you want to do CPS separate? Or do them together?
Let's do.
Yeah, let's do.
Start with the region and then go to CPS. Okay. All right. So if any members have questions on the region, now is your time. So we are now really moving into, this is what we call our budget workshop, which is really just a way, we, we talked about this the other night, but it is just to have a directed meeting just on the budget. So this is the time for everyone's questions to be answered. We're going to start with the region. And Sharon, if you're online, if you have any questions, just put your raise hand feature up that we can ask you for your questions. So why don't we just go through everyone's questions now? Okay. So if you have a question, want me to start? Are you ready?
Alexa?
No, I'm happy to go last.
You go last. Okay. Carrie, do you want to go first? Or I just want to go around to make sure everybody gets their questions answered.
Sure. So I had a couple of questions. One, and I'm just curious if you can talk through summer school a little bit. And sorry, I did not. But while I was collecting the questions, I did not tell you this in advance, so I apologize. So if you don't have the information in front of you, that's my fault, not yours. I, I'm just curious if you can talk a little bit about summer school. I noticed a number.
CPS?
Region only, region only. These are regional questions.
So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm okay on region right now.
You're okay on region right now. Okay, Court.
I referred Tuesday night to our consulting roles and budget. I wonder if there's any additional information there. Or when you get to it, I'd like to look further into our bus leases and understand alternative pricing. Were we not to put more diesel on the road and were we to electrify? Those are, those are two top of mind. See what else I sent to Carrie earlier.
Well, I think the answer from the consultant position is exactly what Kristen said the other night. Every time we build the budget, we look at where we've been using consultants and where we're winding off of that particular topic. And then whatever the new priorities are, if the consultant roles are appropriate to support us in that, we will budget for them then. So we're not incurring great, huge amounts of new expenses. We're trying to live within the budget lines we've had. We did take some significant cuts to the PD lines this, in FY twenty-four. So we haven't reinstated all of those and we're living within the lines that Kristen's in charge of, which has always been the case, that we try to make sure that that's how we roll out. The one exception is like responsive classroom, a massive rollout of a program like that will come with additional costs, which, as you know, we, and it's a CPS reference, but we worked through that with a multiple set of different vendors and sources. So in terms of regional and big picture, both, it's pretty level funded and we just swap out the consultants based on the needs.
And a lot of the consultants are for PD. They're PD.
They're almost all PD.
Almost all PD consultants, yeah.
For various purposes, we might have consultants supporting some of the, you know, the substantially intensive special ed classrooms as those came online. We have consultants working with us from challenge success. We have consult all strategic plan aligned, which seems really important to mention, deeper learning, et cetera. So.
And even with the rollout of those additional PD days, like at the high school level in particular, when you are using those consultants to do those PD days.
Depending sometime. The goal is always to train the staff up so that they're running.
Yep.
PD days. And so like the paths that are going to happen next week, it's a very big mix of some consultants and a lot of in-house folks. So.
We also have DEI consultants in the past. Are those continuing? Are those increasing? Are those?
We've remained on a small retainer with ideas for Paula Martin's support. On an as-needed basis, we'll pull her in for certain consults because of her breadth of experience in a wide range of districts and can advise us and briefly on a particular question. But it's minimal. It's not an expensive contract by any means, and it's on a very sporadic basis that we're using Paula now.
Is it, is it like project-based or is it hourly? How do you, like?
So she gets, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. We, we do it. She bills us after she's done things and we've, we've paid that as she submits invoices.
So we know curriculum and PD, of course, is the big one. We've got one over on the DEI side. In terms of our, I don't know what the title is, our information officer, is that a consulting role or is that a?
I'm losing. No, he's on staff in a very, in a more stipended sense. I know we've gone, we've mentioned this the last few years, very well researched. We're very highly supported for how much he actually is getting for cost. He has been engaged with me every day this week on different topics. So.
Okay. And where is that listed in the budget? I'm just curious for terminology purposes.
It's a, it's a salary expense.
So it would be in district administration.
Yes, and I believe it's in finance staff. We don't have a separate, for that part, partial position, we don't have a separate account for it.
He's been declining COLAs for as long as I've been here. So it really has been a static stipend essentially.
Good, thank you.
Just another point to clarify, the DI contract services number, you'll see the increase in that is largely due to the calculus project. So.
Because we had to pick that up.
Right. So the number you saw was not for consultants to come in. It's for the funding, the calculus project in our budget.
That's clarifying that.
Oh, good. Thank you.
The other question Court mentioned was asking about our buses. I did put our transportation director, interim assistant business manager created a schedule. I just summarized it like this, just at a high level to show the number of vehicles we have and by year. And one of the questions, I think, follow-up, I don't know if it was here or somewhere else, asked, you know, what's the typical life of a bus? Our target is ten years. Realistically, we don't always get there. I'd say eight to ten years is kind of the life. We do take good care of our buses and we have mechanics, three mechanics on our team. I think we get more out of them than, than a vendor, like, I'm not going to name companies, but when you outsource, I don't think they necessarily do as well to get eight to ten years. Our current replacement plan is two per year. We do have a little, as you'll see, a lot was done in two thousand seventeen. So we do have a little bit of a bump there that we're talking through ways to, to manage.
We had gotten very behind. So that's why those bumps are there in seventeen, plus the high school schedule change.
But what this doesn't reflect is that we, we ordered two buses. So some of these, the ones you see going into service with two thousand twenty-four, we ordered those in two thousand twenty-two. So we have two that we ordered for each district at the end of twenty-three that are going to take a year to arrive. And then we have funds in this year's budget. So we do have eight more buses that would come online when the supply chain issues get resolved.
So eight more would cycle in and eight would cycle out?
Correct. The two thousand seventeen vehicles, some of those have less mileage than others, but that would be the group that we'd be looking at cycling out.
And the hoped-for two-per-year replacement schedule, is that a regional or is that one-in-one region?
Both districts.
Two plus two.
Two plus two, and that's the budget for twenty-five. And those are lease assumptions. So we, I factored in what our leases are, that we, we lease for five years. And as some drop off, new ones come on. The, this actually did come up in a select board meeting too, the idea of this is in the budget because we know we need buses every year versus it being in capital. So I understood the select board members' point there. If it was to be in the capital budget and there was risk of not getting a bus, we'd have risk of not getting our students to school. So, you know, that's one that we, we do need kind of ongoing funding for. Whether it should be leased or purchased, that's a different question that we're open to suggestions on, but our financial capacity is leasing them right now.
Yeah, and we've, I've brought budgets in the previous years where we tried to budget for what we would own. And, I mean, I think that Finance Committee's got to look at the guideline with that in mind, or we get forced back into leasing. So we can't hit the guidelines that have been coming forward and budget to flat buy buses. So we're happy to have that conversation if people want to approach it differently, but we can't meet educational. I'm not willing to have educational needs compete with school buses at this point. So if the community wants to fund enough to buy them outright, great, but they'd have, the guideline would have to be adjusted.
They're ticket items.
Right.
And what's the duration of lease?
Five years.
Then we own them.
Yeah, so it's lease-purchase.
Yeah, at least to own.
Dollar at the end, but.
What's, what happens at the end? Is there a buyback of a dollar or is it?
It, it's a nominal. I'm supposed to say that. They don't ask us for the dollar. I always wondered about that. Give you a dollar? I'm not going to, anyway. And we always will, I mean, they're, they're going to have life left in them after five years, so we will take them. It is lined up with the way Desi allows us to get reimbursement. If we were to purchase a bus, they won't let us get reimbursed for the full purchase cost in one year. We have to.
At the region.
Over five years. Correct.
Yeah, worth noting, we have subsidy at the region through the state.
So the number we're carrying, Bob, for, for the two is?
Forty-two in service.
No, I'm, forgive me. The, the dollar number we're carrying for the two new leases?
I think it's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, but I can find the exact number.
No, annually.
Yes, that's for the whole fleet. So some of those have expired leases. Some of those are active leases. That's the, that's the full amount.
So part of that three-thirty is locked in. Those are existing lease purchase contracts. What are we carrying for new money or new buses within that three-thirty?
I believe it's about seventy-five. No, it's about seventy-five thousand.
About seventy-five times an anticipated five. Okay. At some point.
Divided by two buses.
At some point, can we put that next to the alternative?
We can.
So that people, so that I know what, what we're looking at.
By alternative, you mean electric buses?
Correct.
Yeah. So we, we do have that document. We went through this summer. We did some extensive work on the electrification. And we tried to apply for that grant, which of course they couldn't get. And, you know, and the, the cost between the electric and the diesel, I mean, it's still, there's still significant cost without grant money. You know, I mean, we really need grant money to be able to move towards electrification. And then it's also the question of capacity and what do we have capacity for at Knox Trail?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, right.
And I think we have all that data and we can put something like that maybe in the budget book.
I, I hope we keep this front and center. We're dealing with the health of our kids. We're dealing with cost pressures that make these decisions very difficult. We're dealing with something that is inarguably a climate crisis. So I think we've got to keep these constantly on our radar and constantly in conversation.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, through the, for all the grants, we, we've literally applied for every grant we possibly can try and apply for. It's not for lack of trying or for motivation. It really is a cost. And I would, I would love for an organization to come out there and say, hey, I want to establish, you know, a five-on-one, three C to get electric buses and gift them to the district. I think we would gladly accept any gift of electrification of buses, but I'm just, the cost is really, it's the driver.
Have we engaged with the light plant? Because I think there's many upsides for them in terms of using the buses at peak hours in the summer when they're mostly not being used, I would assume.
We talked conceptually, conceptually about it. And Brian talked, mentioned it to Dave, the concept, it's kind of a concept. There's only one place that we know that's doing this, which is through Highland. You know, so conceptually, yes. I think if we were to look at this, the way to do it would be to try to do it with one bus and test the model before we get ourselves into a place where we have a lot of buses and we don't have the ability to replace them.
I understand, yeah.
So I think that we're, we're not going to lose sight of this. I, I think that there, there is a lot of moving pieces. I also believe the light plant has a lot on their plate, getting, we're going to have a new middle school that's going to be electric. I think, you know, it's something that's in our, in our minds and we know it's in others' minds as well. And I can tell you, we won't lose sight of it.
It feels like a community discussion to me. If the community thinks this is important, they can talk about a Warren article to fund it. I, you know, I feel like there's only so much we as a group can do, or certainly I can do.
Yeah.
We can help the public see that that's their option.
Isn't, yeah, there's an infrastructure piece too that we need. We can't add buses unless we add.
The.
The transformer.
Electric service to the, and then the lesser infrastructure on site is the actual bidirectional charging, but the the service, you have a one-time cost to increase the service to Knox Trail.
Yeah.
So that's a big discussion, you know, I don't know.
So, so you're sort of saying it's a bigger discussion than this group here is, can have, it needs to have more people at the table to ascertain the right path, path forward.
I think so. Yeah, and I also think that, you know, we're in a situation, we are a municipality, and what our capability is versus what, you know, towns that use national grid, they're two different things, so I think that, you know.
We have a lot more control though.
We have more control, but we also have less money and infrastructure, so I think they're, they're constant discussions that we've been having.
Has the Light Board had a discussion about this?
Brian Folds' chair is actively talking quite a bit about it and continues to engage with us, so it's certainly on their radar.
Just have a discussion with him about whether they've had a public discussion about electric buses?
Whether the Light Board has had a discussion.
I don't know, can you ask?
I'm asking, sure.
We can ask, yeah.
That'd be great.
We can ask. Okay, so anything else on buses?
I just had a related question about what other vehicles we have at the region.
Oh, okay, well, we have our maintenance vehicles, we have one IT vehicle. And maintenance vehicles also include like a sander, a tractor. I can email a full list to the committee, I don't think I.
Yeah, we have a van.
The question.
A van for student transportation. The, the driver's ed cars, which are electric, but no chargers except for one over here at Ripley. So we can get you the complete list.
So the sander, we have a sander separate from the Concord Public Schools, we don't share it?
They don't share it.
We just have a sander dedicated to the high school.
Yeah, we're, we're responsible for clearing all our own lots, and the region has to especially take care of itself, so we have some pieces of equipment, mild, insufficient frankly, but we can get you the list, we don't have it.
So I'm just saying, we don't share any equipment, so the region has all its own equipment, we don't share between CPS and the region.
Generally not, to keep, to get the high school done when we're self-sufficient means they, it's, it's a huge up, it's a huge lift every time there's a significant snowstorm to get the high school clear. We have, we've had to do some contracting to do this, to do the same. We can talk the CPS, frankly, the, the way we operate to clear snow is always holding my breath, hoping that we can clear in time and I don't lose another day to clear, clear the parking lots because we are self-sufficient.
The, the maintenance, I don't know, I'm not sure I completely understood your question, the maintenance team does all the clearing, our schools, so the maintenance team, some of their vehicles are purchased by the region, some are purchased by CPS. Some of them are dedicated to CPS and some of them are dedicated to the region, but there might be certain vehicles that they use in both places where they need it.
Right, but it's not a large number.
Yeah, but we don't use town, we don't use like the DPW vehicles.
I understand, yeah.
Which is different, most communities have the DPW clear the schools, the, the big scale piece of the schools, we don't, we don't have that support, so.
So maybe that's a conversation to have.
Oh, I've had many. They are understaffed and stretched as is.
No, so what I'm trying to say is, is there an economy, like, would it be less expensive at the end of the day with vehicles and personnel? To, to maybe share, to.
I have talked with every DPW director and.
I mean, the region.
Bandwidth to do it right now, or interest or both, I don't know.
Yeah, but when we're looking at a hundred sixty thousand, you know, a very expensive sander.
I have tried Cynthia, I don't know what else to tell you other than I've had the conversations.
I think what I'm, what I'm hearing you say, perhaps Cynthia, is if it's not working at the administrative level, maybe it should move up a level. If, if we want to have a conversation about interdepartmental collaboration that could be cost.
I don't want it to be sound, I don't want to sound like we don't collaborate with them, they're very supportive of us on many, many fronts, it's just everyone's tapped out.
That, but we didn't get far on this one is my point, and if we wanted to get further, maybe we do it differently. If you've had repeated bites at that apple and haven't, haven't, hasn't.
I will say, when we get totally pushed and school is on the line, they come swing over and help us finish, so I wouldn't want it to be presented as adversarial, it's not.
Oh, no, nobody's implying that at all. No, I think what we're, what we're suggesting is it's to the betterment of the entire town, if we can look for cost-saving with the new forms of collaboration.
Okay, so that takes us through vehicles. Court, did you have any other questions?
Without calling up what I had sent out last week, I don't know, but I'm sure Bob has them.
Yeah, I don't know whose questions they'll be, I have a document.
I, I just think we haven't seen all of this, everyone hasn't seen all of it, all of our members, so now is the time.
I can.
Oh, you have this document here that you've shared.
That's the collated group of questions.
I can read the question, I'm not gonna share it on screen though. So the other question, one of the other questions that was raised, are we doing a single district now, are we doing both?
We're still on the. We're still in the region because we want to let Sharon go.
So when it comes to staff, student hardware, question was raised at the regional district, we have a budget of a little bit over four hundred thousand, that is for all of our student devices and staff devices. We do not have leases, we purchase those. And this is an annual recurring cost, and actually that would be the preference, is to purchase them. And that cost includes some service contract, I think for three years. So the four hundred thousand again is for all staff and student devices, and it's not leases, it's outright purchases. And you might recall approving, we used to be in kind of a prepaid status where we made these purchases at the end of a school year for the following school year, so we had a safety net in our budget, we, when we did the access road, we kind of took away that safety net by using it, so we're now kind of in the year.
As you go.
But this is how you've typically, like, that was.
That's normal.
Pre-COVID, that's how.
That was a luxury during COVID, you know, obviously there was needs during that time, but it was, that's when that was created.
Yeah, the concern always with prepay is once you drop it, you've dropped it.
So we're not paying for those, the replace, replacement cycle for student devices was asked, it wasn't specific to schools, I'd say the target cycle is five years, but when we're on track with that at the high school, realistically, we get more than five years out of the devices sometimes. They, they get a good workout at the high school, maybe we get more five years than the other schools, but I'd say we, we do can get, we can get beyond five years, but we're, we're in a good place in a replacement cycle at the high school.
So when we buy devices, how many approximately are we buying every year?
Four hundred thousand divided by a thousand.
We buy enough for the incoming freshman class typically, and then we recycle everything we get back from the outgoing students, seniors, go to the tutors so that we have devices for them, they usually get the second-hand devices, there might be staff needs to make sure we keep the staff fleet as current as we need to.
What's the life cycle for the staff?
Until they don't work anymore.
Really?
Yeah, we, we are not freshening those as often as we wish.
Okay.
We tend to wait till the staff member complains that it's not working. People get issued it on hire and then keep it until it's.
And so the freshener, and then new staff get new computers, is that right?
Typically, that's about right, yeah. But we are getting six, seven years out of it.
But for the students, that's a lot of your life cycle, it sounds like.
But we, when we get it back.
I understand.
We, we deploy it again, so it stays online for another couple of years after the kids have had it usually.
In the four hundred thousand covers more than the student devices, there is some left there after we get the incoming students' devices. And there's also four years of classes and a five-year life cycle, so that leaves some financial capacity to support staff, and yeah, we need, we need to refresh some of that, but there is some financial capacity to do things beyond the student devices.
Which our needs are beyond what we're budgeting for, and I'm not asking for more funds, it's just an ongoing discussion, there's going to be projector replacement discussions coming to you from, from all the schools, but we're talking high school right now. And, you know, Peter talks with me constantly about that, and I see the need coming, and it'll be a big lift when it happens to go to screens like, probably like we're doing at the middle school, which are expensive. Well, they're better than some of the projectors used to be, but if you do it on scale for a building the size of the high school, it's going to be big costly discussion, so.
So what's the lifespan of a projector?
Well, we get them to last a really long time, probably longer than they might have, you would have thought, but the ones at the high school are almost ten years old, so they're older at the elementary schools, which is not the conversation we're having right now.
The new projectors are laser, which are no bulbs, so that's basically one of the big costs of older projectors, is the replacement bulbs. But the front throws, we don't have smart boards anymore, right? I don't know, maybe we have some at the elementary schools, I'm not.
Uh, active boards.
Right, we don't have active boards, where most people aren't doing them anymore because you just have touch with the.
Yeah, like the new school is going to have touchscreen screens that roll.
Weird, yeah.
So.
That, like that rolling.
Yeah, so we've been actually starting to replace little bits here and there of other equipment in all the schools, when it comes up, one, the supply chain's much better for the touchscreens, and two, they're cheaper. And the minute people get access to it, they're wondering when they can have one.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, and I know you'd like to have a standard number, but for instance, this year's ninth grade is significantly smaller than prior.
So we're using the delta to do catch up on some other things on a year when it was, when there were three hundred and thirty seniors.
Yeah.
Kids the last few years, so.
And the devices have come down probably like two hundred apiece, and they're better, so they last longer than the Intel, the M1 machines. So the ninth graders probably have some better devices than teachers, I'm just saying, so.
For sure, yeah.
So, you know, we might think about sometimes giving the ninth graders, not the best devices, and the teachers, you know, I just feel like staff should have.
Yeah, we're, we're sure to keep the staff operational for sure, they're not getting machines that don't allow them to function, we're very, very sure of that.
Because I was sitting next to a staff member where I could hear his fan going, and I know, I know by that is, it's an older device, and so I, I'm on the front line of that situation constantly, and I, I feel like sometimes our students have better devices than our staff, and so, you know, that.
Well, and to your point, when we get a little room within the four hundred thousand, we can catch up a little bit more, but it, Peter and I worked really hard in my tenure to get stable ass, stable numbers in each budget, so that we're not getting these big growths and then dips and all of that, a little COVID aside, we had some of that, but we're doing okay with the four hundred thousand, I think part of the infra, you know, the, the capital needs in a building is a different discussion to me, if we have to replace projectors en masse, that, that I wouldn't expect to be able to do in the four hundred, but keeping staff fresh enough, keeping the tutors online, making sure people are functional, we seem to be doing okay, is it perfect?
No, yeah, maybe like next year, maybe you should think, yeah, and I don't want to add to the budget, but we're taking some of that money and just incrementally start replacing some of the projectors, I think that's, doing it en masse is going to be a capital article probably.
Right now, I'm, the projectors are working, so for the moment, we've got some lead time to figure out the discussion.
Yep.
Okay.
So, taking it down with the regional items, it was a question about copiers, just talking about the high school, we recently replaced one old aging copier and another is on order, we purchase these anti-leasing, I don't think they're good for many reasons, one, it's administratively burdensome, two, you add interest to it, you spend a lot of administrative time fighting late fees or it's, and then there's sometimes issues at the buyout, so unlike bus leases, the copier leases are.
So I'll just add, we had been leasing machines because five years ago, and now we're kind of in the same position, we had en masse so much not working that we had to do a big overhaul, and I think we're kind of getting back to that same place, which is what happens if you don't have a solid replacement plan. So I think Bob's right, going to purchase them makes sense, and then we'll get that replacement plan on track and stick with it.
Then what do we do for maintenance?
So the, the good news is the, the state contract for RICO, which is where we currently have for copiers, includes three-year support, three-year full support, purchase and acquisition.
And what's the typical life of a?
It's more than three years, I'd say seven plus. Then they'll, they have recommended page counts and recommended age, it's some combination of the two, depending on the model, we have a chart that we worked on with RICO, that they basically are green, yellow, and red, red are the ones we need to replace, and so that's what our we're talking, but that's our CPS, shouldn't talk about CPS, but.
We have something that are for maintenance after the three years.
Service contract.
Service contracts.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
And then.
And they're expensive to repair.
Yes, there is a service contract after three years, however, after a certain amount of time, they say, no, we're not going to do a service contract, it's going to be labor and parts, you're going to pay as you go, and so we have, there's, I think, two machines like that now where they refuse to put them on a contract, and those are ones we have to replace and.
Because they're coming out, so.
Yeah.
How many printers would you say you have which are difficult to take away, but they're expensive to, you know, maintain and support, you know what I'm saying?
I don't have that count, we definitely made a lot of mindset shifts so that there's less printers available and people are printing to, if they are printing, they're often printing to the big machines and not individual printers, and we've definitely made some big progress there.
Because it's sort of a staff and everybody headache.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they get so relaxed, you know, and I know it's hard to take. Okay.
Boy, can I ask you also share that document with Sharon and Carrie, I just noticed that, just so everybody has this list of questions.
Sorry.
No, it's totally fine.
Too many things at once?
No, no, I just, I saw it pop into my email. Okay.
One more thing I'll say about printing is, you know, there's a lot of waste, and a lot of districts are moving to a situation where you have to take your badge over to the printer to actually print it out, because people print the wrong.
Any of those are in.
You do.
Yeah, some of them here at Ripley even are coded.
Good, because that's, you know, kind of like picking up a hundred pages of stuff that, and I see it never got picked up. Thank you.
So it looks like for the region, if I'm seeing this correctly, we're now down to athletics expenses and revenues?
We skipped, there's one other one, there was a question about our number of students, the, the, the region piece is how many students are tuitioning into our special ed programs, we have two students at forty-five thousand dollars each from other towns tending our pathways program, I think one of them might be transitioning to launch, our launch program.
And we have another request on the table now for the phone.
Is that, is that like another school district that is recommending, so the, the other school district pays for it versus family or?
Yes, yes, definitely, it's another school district. They're selecting us instead of an out, another out-of-district placement, which is often cost savings for them, and we're thrilled to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you know, would they be eligible for circuit breaker on that tuition or whatever you want to call it?
Not to us.
No, no, them.
I, I have to remind myself of the rates we set, whether it hits the threshold or not, it's close, I think, right at the.
It's still.
Still a cost saving, and often they save on transportation because it's local and not a bigger drive.
Thank you.
Have we picked up any pathway, any rivers?
No, we've actually gone a different direction with rivers, that wasn't coming together, which was totally fine, and we rebuilt it within our own community. So Rivers is almost full this semester and even more full next semester, so our own CC kids are enrolling at a much higher rate, which is better anyway.
But we want to leave that capacity open for you.
Yeah, you know, in talking with other districts who had approached us, it's very hard to make it cost-effective for them to, to send kids over to us, and so that really fell off once we started to share numbers of what we would want and what they had for actual cash to, to offer.
So we don't have to turn off the mechanism, but we're probably not going to use it.
That's my sense right now, but you're right, the mechanism's in place if it comes up.
Thank you.
And then one other quick question that came up is, is just, we were asked about revenue projections, may have updates. We will get revenue projections from the state in January after, you know, we've gone through things, so we'll, we'll find out that later. I think the last item was the athletics, which I have a sheet for and a high-level summary view.
By year trends.
And just for clarity, the committee should have all these questions, and this is within that document also. Thank you.
And so the I wonder if you can share this. Wait with me one sec, I'm just going to share the screen for Sharon, I don't know if Carrie's on too. You see that Sharon?
I do, thank you.
So, uh, we were asked, um, to, to look at kind of history trend of, uh, athletics, um, expenses and, um. We felt like we should also include the general fund, um, kind of get a fuller picture. So what we've done is kind of looked at our trend of expenses and revenues across, um, five years back to FY nineteen. And so, you know, again, during COVID, you can see the numbers are skewed, um. And, um, also, um, I will say that, um, in FY twenty, you'll see a large general fund expense, very little revolving. Sometimes opportunistically, if there is money available in the budget, you can kind of, um. Restore or retain or build your athletic fund balance, um, so I think that is what happened in FY twenty where those expenses were much higher. I think that the trend is more looking at the total expenses, um. And, um, and so there is a bit of a bump into FY twenty-three, um, that is from. Primarily from a couple of things, um, our facilities rental costs have gone up, um. This includes ice hockey, uh, rink rental time, uh, time at the Reggie Lewis Track Center, um. Rental time for Nishoba Valley for ski team practice, um, and some other less, um, frequent. Or infrequent uses of facilities rental, in addition, we have athletic coaches, we have more teams. This includes unified sports, um, and a couple of other sports that I know I talked about at a previous meeting, I don't have the top of my head. But we have grown the number of teams that we have, um, and so, um. Again, this is the trend, um, over five years and, um, I wanted to share that with the group and kind of highlight the. Key contributors to the expense growth.
Was the July one, uh, startup balance healthy for this, this year?
It was, um, it was, um.
You may not have it at hand.
I, I have it in my end of year summary from FY twenty-three, which I can, I can look for while we're.
But you felt comfortable with it.
I did, and we did draw it down a bit, um, you know, we did, um, I do recall that somewhere during my first year, there was a comment about. Building up the balance in the fund and that don't necessarily, um. May not necessarily be appropriate, so we did, you know, look at, well, maybe the athletic revolving fund should bear more of the expenses. So it did get drawn down a little bit last year, some of that was intentional, some of that was by, um, some of the increased rental fees and additional teams, we don't. Don't think we charge for our unified teams, so we don't receive revenue, but we do have expenses.
Yeah, yesterday, again, just because I had the advantage of having, um, six or so chairs in a meeting. Um, I was noticing too, just I'm looking at our revenues and whatnot, um, we did a quick discussion about, um. Student fees with respect to athletics, um, they range from Bedford where there are zero fees. Um, to, you know, we're, we're up at there at the top, so, um. But I did know some school district do charge for clubs, which I don't think we do.
Many do, yeah, we do not.
And we do not, that I thought was, um, a distinction, so we were certainly at the top. Uh, of our, in terms of our free, fee structure with the three hundred dollars, um, but when we sort of went around the table. I thought that was a distinction.
Always has been.
Yeah, yeah. So something to think about.
Oh, oh, yeah, on my radar, I, I purposely haven't brought it to.
Yeah.
So I haven't gone back to look at the minutes from the, the last time fees were raised, but it was exactly this delta between. What the budget was supporting and what the fees were supporting and I think either we need to find some other offsets. Or we're adding teams, we're adding a trainer, we're adding things, we need to figure out a way to offset that, I think. So I think we need to have, and I'm not sure where that got the high, but for example, Bedford and Weston. Have significant contributions by booster groups to, so the, the, the budget is not absorbing all of the athletic fees, it's, it's offset by. Contributions from the community, so we'll make that clear, it's, I don't, you know, we have to be very careful about. Either we move to more of a booster, you know, situation, but you know, this is a, from fifteen, nineteen to twenty-three, we have. Over two hundred thousand dollar increase in the general fund expense.
Well, and I think that, that some of the, all of the teams have the friends of, which act kind of, and we, and we talked to some of the athletic directors about. Boosters versus the friends of, so like AB Saf at AB covers every single sport, we have every sport that's covered by friends of. So parents are still paying into the friends of, they're, they're being asked for donations to cover coaches that aren't in our budget. The assistant coaches that are unnecessary, right, so I, I just want to be clear that at the region, um, it's not just. The athletic fees, you know, like, so parents are paying your three hundred dollar athletic fee, you might be asked for a donation, you might be asked for. So it's way more than the three hundred that you're typically paying.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess I'm just acutely cognizant of that, the kids that can't pay the three hundred dollars. You know, we do provide scholarship, but then they're also being asked and it, and it feels bad, you know. We want more money, want more money, want more money, so I just think we, it's a balance that we have to strike as a school committee, you know, to, to figure out. How we, how we keep kids involved in sports and the adding of athletic teams, their teams that, you know, other. Schools might have, you like, it's a good thing to add. Yeah, no, I know, but I think that, you know, we have to recognize that parents are paying more than just that three hundred dollar fee.
What is, um, like, how do people structure club fees? Like, is it like the?
Usually it's a flat, flat fee for the entire year and then you can join any club.
Much, and they're much.
Like an entry point.
It's much less, but usually you build the entire building and you don't track who's who and you just collect fifty bucks from every child. I've purposely not brought that to you, I think the free accessibility to clubs has been really important for us. Yeah, I'm gonna say the same about athletics, I'm totally fine with what we've absorbed in the operating budget for the increase on athletics, two of those teams have been. Unified sports teams that didn't exist before, completely aligned with our strategic plan work. I, I think we are finding offsets, you're not getting huge increases here in the budgets. Because of those, you know, because of that change, you're not coming, we're not bringing you seven percent budget increases, we're, we're finding offsets. Before they get to you, so.
And I think that's important, the offsets are critical because I think none of us are eager to see additional fee, uh. Levied, um, but we also want to be able to argue that we're, uh, supporting a, a level service budget, so when we talk ads. We have to talk offsets and then we can talk level service.
Well, yeah, and I think I could argue level service means we're providing opportunities for students who wanna play sports, so.
I agree, but, but ads are ads at the end of the day.
Happy to provide the list of what's been added for.
No, I, well, that's what we're doing, no, we're, we're, we're getting, uh, very, very, uh, informed about those ads, thank you.
I also think too, not to complicate things, but I also think too, like, being in a French club, right? Where you might meet once a week or, you know, there might be a sort of more free, free flowing schedule is very different. Than being in the fall theater performance, so they're, you know, like, where you're meeting five days a week, there's a dedicated, you know, director. Potentially if it's the musical, a musical director, so I, I think.
Could you tear it?
There could be, uh, uh, and I, it won't raise, you know, meaningful amounts of money, but. Um, to make it sort of more equitable with sports, like when you have that level of investment, I think it's different again than the French club. Not to mean the French club, but.
Had my way, we wouldn't charge the athletes either.
Yeah, well, no, 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 I go that direction, exactly. Um, but again, I just say, you know. As we confront.
When we raised it five, whatever years ago, it was mainly because of the cost of maintaining the fields, yeah, and we were trying to. Get some offset to the budget demands to maintain the fields to the caliber that the community was expecting, that was the driver. We accomplished that, it wasn't about coaches, it wasn't about the number of teams, it was simply about maintenance of the campus, sure, I just wanna.
And you don't feel like, you feel like the current funds allow you to do that?
Yeah, we, it, it helped to balance it a little bit better, it's still expensive to maintain those fields, we do a lot more in-house than we did at the time. Frankly, it's a constant strain and tug about how much we can do in-house versus out, but the increased fees have really, that was the only point that we. Raised it for, yeah.
Right, so any other questions from the committee in the room or outside of the?
I sort of just have one, it's not a quantitative one, more qualitative, um, I would just like, because we haven't really talked about it and. I, if you're not prepared, that's fine, um. Can we talk about the new administrative structure at the high school and I know we're only three, four months into school, but. Um, anecdotally, is there, have we seen success, is it tangible? Um, has the student response been good, as the teacher, you know, sort of, if you could speak to that for, like, not a ton, but just a little bit. Or just again, because it was a driver and a big change.
Oh, it's been incredibly positive, um, so, uh, anecdotally, what's happening is we have actual administrators. Supporting teachers on teaching and learning, uh, Mr. Green is now available to do that, um. And, and not always in an evaluative way, which is not bandwidth we had before, so he's actively having ongoing dialogues with. With educators and department chairs and moving things forward in a really supportive collaborative way. We can't say enough about how we've never had bandwidth to do that before, um. Ms. Mainz is by and large managing student life, just like we expected that she would, but in a very big continuum of ways. From discipline right on up to students struggling with whatever issue might be homelessness or otherwise. Um, and then collaborating with the mental health teams over there to make sure kids are getting services and supports, especially in crisis. Um, that's leaving the co-principals the opportunity, I've never seen us have before, to really do the big picture work on their. You know, moving their leadership teams forward, they're actively engaged twice a week with them and the initiatives that we're working on, I was with them for two hours. And depot learning yesterday, um, the big picture mindset, the level of attention to budgets, the level of attention to schedules. We have a new schedule at the high school that's been implemented incredibly successfully, their availability to do things that. Have not been on that team's doable list ever, um, is now really started to shift, so it's. Nothing but successful from our vantage point, um, we're hearing from parents that they're able to access people more easily and more specifically. Um, we were always in an uphill climb to be timely in responses, which is always our biggest priority, really hard and frustrating when you can't keep up. And now because there's enough staff, enough leadership there, they're able to get timely answers, um, communication. We're now getting to, the staff's getting this incredible weekly communication from the co-principals that had never been a structure we'd had in place on a regular basis. The staff feels well informed and supported, um, just layers and layers of progress that, uh, we're really excited about.
And I think what's been really great to see, just, you know, from an extracurricular perspective, to see that admin team, those four. The two assistant principals and the co-principals, they're at events all the time, you know, whether it's. Athletics, music, um, the, the luncheons, like whatever it is, they're very available and they're out there in the community and I think that.
And that's intentional.
Yes, yes, parents absolutely understand who everybody is and what their role is and they're extremely accessible and available. And I, I feel like the kids feel very supportive, they're running flex blocks, they're, you know, making connections with kids, which is what we want. And it really just, I, I do feel as a parent, the high school feels very much of a community and it's. That is only added to it, so, really kudos to that admin team and please.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would like to, you know, in a formal way, sort of commend their, and especially the two newer. Um, hires, their commitment to being very omnipresent, um.
I mean, and we've been able, not only at events, but the part you don't see behind is Ms. Maine sitting upstairs in the, um. Spaces in the hot, the kids are telling you, I'm sure, there's a very different presence of administration upstairs too, which we weren't able to. To, you know, maximize before, um, she loves sitting in that.
I just, yeah.
Learning space and working and being visible to kids and has pro and, you know, lots of positives to that on many levels, so it's. Been just.
How it's working, because to echo Tracy's point, as a parent, um, you see it very clearly and I just wanted to ensure that. Oh, it wasn't just optics, there was real meaningful.
Even deeper behind the scenes, for sure.
Great.
And they're bringing their strengths, you know, one of them has been in the data wise protocol for a long time, which comes out of Harvard and he's become a district leader here. How to use that protocol because that was the background he had, so it's been just extraordinary.
Great.
Important to learn.
Um, so any other questions before I adjourn the region, Sharon, I'll look to you, any questions before you adjourn?
Hi Tracy, no, no, thank you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I have one question, it doesn't need to come today, uh, sort of a, maybe a five year history and circuit breaker? What the, is it a grant, what is it called, it's a?
These, our auditors call it a grant, I don't, I call it revolving fund, so we, we, I'm just gonna call it circuit breaker.
Yeah, in both districts.
Right, so the, the amount we get versus, and then how we use it.
Yeah, I have.
It's a, so, I have a charity did last year, I can just update it for this year. That'd be great, and then, uh, so, going back to the, what you told us the last meeting, so we get a grant. Let's say for this year, that comes from our.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
That'll help her.
And then. Then it needs to be used in twenty-four and twenty-five?
You, the grant we're getting this year is from our expenses last year, our claims last year.
Is it?
No.
Funding that we're receiving this year is based on last year's claim.
And the claim was twenty-two.
For twenty-four, yeah. He's right, and we have carryover, so that's the part you're mixing together. Carryovers from twenty-two, but we are getting funds from twenty-three right now, we just don't spend them all.
Right, but we have to spend them next year.
This calls for arrows.
Yeah, it's like a circuit breaker arrow.
We can.
The revenue that we receive this year, we don't have to spend this year, we can carry over and spend FY twenty-four and the revenue this year relates to FY twenty-three. What we're spending now in theory is some of what we received in twenty-two, also probably use a little bit of current year circuit breaker too.
Right now, we are doing.
And we can use it in any way for any special education expenses?
Yes, but for simplicity, we just apply it to tuitions.
Okay, but, uh, so, but it has to be K twelve, not pre-K.
Has to be, um. I don't know that it.
If we had a preschool out of district, they, and they hit the thresholds, we would get circuit breaker for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
We don't have.
Can you collect, uh, do we collect interest on money in revolving funds?
We, um, we don't, we don't accrue it in the revolving fund itself, we, we collect interest on our deposits, um, in our bank accounts. And that shows up in our interest income, we don't get any in the CPS side, CPS side.
Goes to the town.
That goes to the town, I'm in the region side, um, we have bank account interest and that was like a key driver, if you, if you remember our, um. Our revenues went up significantly on interest income because of the interest rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, region?
Yeah, um, transportation coordination, I see a, uh, change in, I'm just curious how, how that's working out. Because we know that mission control is so critical to, it looks like a point four reduction over there. I know you're not prepared for this one, I don't.
No, no, that's fine, I said, that's a mistake, it's not a point four reduction, it was over, we had a duplicate point four for the same position last year, but there was no. The dollars were correct, last year was, um, overstated on the FTE. Okay, um, John and, um, Michelle are doing a fantastic job, uh, leading that group, we, um. Even have them supporting an additional Metco special ed route when, um, our in-house person is, um, out. And they continue to manage fantastically and, um. We, knock on wood, just are very.
I think we had budgeted that originally in case we, in case they cried help and we needed to put in some other additional help and that hasn't been the case.
So we're retaining the course and doing an internal fix on the chart here, okay, thank you.
Okay, oh, into the microphone, Court.
I'm bad, sorry.
Okay.
I won't repeat everything I said.
So with that, um, I will adjourn the region and turn it back over to Alexa to go back to CPS, so Sharon, thank you for coming. See you soon.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I think it would be appropriate to pivot to some CPS questions. We can start with any that were included on the document and then just kind of just keep moving around.
Some of the answers will be the same, so I'll go through. Yeah, I'll go through briefly on some of those. So first question was about leases for devices. So we did, in fact, lease devices for CPS, student devices. We did that, I believe, during COVID, it was one that was kind of an immediate need for one, one devices across the schools. And we had insufficient quantities at the time to support it. We are now in the last year of the lease, I think we're making the last payment imminently, or maybe just did.
In FY twenty-four.
FY twenty-four, so the lease cost was just under sixty thousand, it's fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars per elementary school. And so we've been kind of locked into very limited capacity to acquire new devices. The bulk of our budget's been tied up in that the past four years. And so now, as we move forward, we have some flexibility in the budget. We do have some staff backlog that we're going to address, so our priority for devices this year, that sixty thousand dollar budget we held in there, our priority is to refresh staff and apply that towards staff devices to bring them more current. The middle school's in a better place, the middle school's in a place more similar to the high school where we're on track with the replacement cycle. The elementary schools, we do have gaps and by having this budgeted and not, not targeted to a lease, we can use those funds to support acquiring devices for staff replacement.
So for the middle school, for sixth graders, we buy, we have, what about the lifecycle, we do buy new devices?
I'm sorry.
For the sixth grade, so.
For the middle school, we have a five-year lifecycle.
So we do flip them around, okay.
We have also taken some of the older machines and reallocated to the elementary schools at times. So if they have some life still within that five years or even longer, we redeploy them.
And then for the building project, are we buying any devices, any classroom devices outside of the projectors and?
No, just.
Technology.
We're so, well, I should say generally no, we're still about to start working on the technology budget, but there is not one-to-one device allocation in the building project.
Are we gonna do the thing where we, at the high school, we have the devices in each classroom, what you're thinking there?
Yeah, but no, we're not buying like desktops like we have here. We're taking those out at both middle and high school, actually, as they die, we are not replacing them because everybody has a laptop.
And so basically, the only classroom devices we have going back to the region is that computer lab. And we're buying those this year, right?
Yeah, we still have the high school computer lab online. We are phasing out the labs at the middle school.
Okay, okay.
They'll still have access to the laptops and do it in a regular classroom.
I think labs at the elementary school?
No, we've undone all of it.
Okay, okay.
We needed the space and redeployed the machines.
Makes sense.
It's not still one-to-one device, I know during COVID, even at CPS, it was one-to-one.
Yeah, we are.
Elementary schools, what is?
Intentionally, we're not going to one-to-one, we're pretty much one to two.
Okay.
And that's me making it harder to use technology all day long.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Which I appreciate, I think everyone agrees with me on, so one to two is a pretty good balance. It's harder at fourth and fifth grade, there's a lot more that they do online, there's a lot more need for them to type and do that, but we're still working through it.
I mean, unfortunately, they have to do MCAS online.
Yes, so we, yeah, and we're watching, they're ready for that.
I know, you watch a third grader take MCAS, it's not particularly pleasant, actually, but yeah.
Luckily, they're on, the device is enough, but yeah, it's something a learning curve.
So keep going.
So I'm all set with vehicles, as you kind of explained that at the region, unless somebody else needs to have more clarity there.
For, for vehicles, I'll have the same bus questions. See why we've got our recommendation vis a vis any alternatives? I mean, I know why we have it, but I think we need to see the alternative approaches.
Right.
Court, are you looking for information from, just for clarity, informate, more information on the alternatives? Or is the document from the summer sufficient?
Well, we can resurface that, but I think, let's see if, see if that's adequate, see if those numbers have changed.
Imagine having more information.
I don't think we have any more than the summer, we did extensive information on that, so maybe I'll just reshare that.
I think it's gotta be.
I can reshare that.
It's gotta be routinely recited, given the significance of the issue.
And I think in one of Mr. Fold's presentations, he did indicate the total cost of ownership is, is not this, the delta in terms of the cost, it's lower cost.
So there, there's actually been a little, I've gotten, I've done a little more research on the cost of ownership and, and I, I really think we need to, sometimes school districts actually hire outside consultants to deal with the cost of ownership. I don't think it's that simple, I don't think it's very simple on the cost of ownership.
I'm not asking for our administration to research that, that's just my memory, the part of his presentation from a couple of years ago, whenever that was.
And I think it's, you know, and obviously things have changed because technology changes, costs change of vehicles and grants that are available and all that. So I'm not sure we have complete accurate.
Right, and the one thing I'll throw out there is that this sounds like something very much in our town sustainability director's wheelhouse. And this did come up, that the select board, that, you know, sustainability, at least the town of Concord, you know, region is a little different. You know, should be blended into our budgeting. If we have to, if we're going to hit these goals that the town put forth. And that should be, you know, we have a full-time sustainability director, so maybe that's something that should be, I know he has a lot going on. But, you know, the town manager would have probably helped set his priorities. So I think that's something that all of us are looking for a little more clarity.
My understanding, based on a conversation we had with the deputy manager and sustainability director, is there's a possible plan to start building in sustainable capital projects into the town manager's budget. Alcott was the discussion at the time, the boiler. To me, that's the way through this, is that there's a town discussion of costs that people are willing to take on. And then we're, we're highly supportive of implementation and what opportunities there are and where. But the resourcing of it is coming from the town side. So if that's the momentum that starts to pick up, I think that's going to be really successful and positive because I think we've struggled to say we want to do this and then get the funding we need to actually pull it off. It's actually not been very effective. So I think a shift in how the approach happens where they're calling us saying, we heard, you know, the Alcott boiler could be an option, do you want us to budget that for FY twenty-six? Well, that's an easy yes, right?
And I just don't think it's the schools, they're just silos, right?
Not.
And so if we get everybody talking a little bit more to one another, we might get more.
Yeah, so there's great seeds of that, I think you heard Carrie the other night mention sustainable efforts they're doing at the townhouse. That's the FY twenty-five ask, I expect we're going to see from them to put the sustainable funds there and then, you know, put the Alcott piece in twenty-six. So I think there's growth in that direction, which would be great.
Because, you know, there, we're now getting more of the senior people hired in the town, right? We have more, I hope, bandwidth to pursue some of these things, whereas we've been understaffed or restaffed, which is, you know, that takes.
And a big challenge.
Yes, I mean, just to do the basics. This, you know, unfortunately, it's not a basic right now, maybe will become a basic thing that we can do going forward, so.
You know, I mean, I think, I think that there's no mistaking that, you know, certainly, we, we support the spirit of sustainability, of course. I don't think there's any objection from a philosophical standpoint in anyone in this room. I think, you know, the obstacle comes when, you know, the implementation thereof, and I think, yeah, and I think it's just, you know, it's interesting when you're an elected board like we are, right? We, we receive advice from many of the different advisory boards in town. One of the finance committees is an advisory board, the, you know, Concord Climate Action Group is an advisory board and, and what is, and to your point, Cynthia, about maybe getting a larger group of people speaking together, oftentimes the advice from the different boards, because everyone's charge is, is specific, right? They're often in conflict with each other, so then, then we're left to kind of synthesize, you know, different pieces of advice from, from different groups. And all the while, our charge is also kind of narrow, which is to ensure that we are, in fact, creating successful paths for our students. So I think the solution, I think Cynthia and Lori both kind of said it, is to ensure that there's more, there's larger coordination so that different groups aren't left to solve this crisis alone, so. So that's good news, I think.
And we are, we've, we've engaged with Eric, he's connected to the consultants we've worked with on the feasibility studies. So he's getting up to speed on that and kind of digesting it and asking more questions. So there's some work being done to kind of move that forward, but it's data gathering now. And I think they're, again, they have their town priority for FY twenty-five, but we're hopeful for FY twenty-six.
Because I know, I keep meaning to ask this question of our building committee representatives, but are we eligible, excuse me, for other inflation reduction credits? You know, we're getting them for the solar, but in terms of the middle school infrastructure, do you know anything, no, that's not our committee's responsibility, but I would just like to pass along that question. Because it's been a significant boom for the solar, and I've seen other schools getting a, where they're all electric school, the building, they're getting input, you know, money back from the federal government, so, or tax credits or whatever they're called.
I don't know, we can find out.
Where could we direct that question? That's a great question.
Consultants.
Yeah, we'll certainly pose the question to the design team and others.
Could go to OPMN design team.
Because I hope it would be a part of also the, I don't know what the study, your study is comparing contrasting electric versus solutions when we're doing, looking at all the schools. Is that what it's going to do? I'm not sure what your study is going to do.
We're, we're in a much more basic operational mode to make sure the facilities are gonna, you know, we're, we're doing preventative maintenance and seeing lifespans and things like that. So it's not a study geared toward how to make the schools net zero.
It's not a retro fit.
Right, right. That doesn't mean there won't maybe be ideas embedded there, but it's not the primary charge.
We do have to do a retro credit ripley pretty soon, right?
We don't, well, the boys, I guess that depends on how to answer that question. These boilers are humming along, they're original.
Ripley?
Ripley is at end of life, Alcott is not.
Cross your fingers they're not yet, because they're still humming.
They're original?
Yeah.
From nineteen fifty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're interesting, right down the hall.
Russell Citizen says, the way they used to build these things, the.
They're better.
They just, they don't die.
You've never seen so much cast iron.
It'd be interesting to see what that study says on, you know, where these are. Do we cross our fingers a lot in the winter? Yes.
In, in fact, my experience is that the, the newer high efficiencies are so lightweight that they sometimes burn themselves out.
Right, I guess, which is true of a lot of things in current times where they're not as long, long-term and you pay to replace them more frequently.
Okay.
I have two quick questions.
Great.
Okay, one is really silly, I'm just curious, the school committee line? There was like a, it's very small dollar, I'm just curious what you spend money on for this committee?
Something got charged there, I'm not sure what it is.
At the conference.
Yeah.
We had to do an advertising for bid, we might place it there.
Okay, oh, I see, okay. Okay, my other question, which I.
Sorry, Jerry, it's not more exciting.
Coffee and tea.
Thought you missed something.
No, no, we're not having lavish meals at our school committee meetings, no.
What, I'm just curious if you can talk through summer school, where you're obviously kind of restructuring what you think about.
Sure.
And I, and I can see in this budget some impact of that, and I'm just curious if you can kind of.
At a high level, sure. So in special education, rather, and I'm going to actually say both special education and general education, we're not going forward with the model we've had for a long time of a few, three to four weeks, of three hours per day of essentially a summer school, a real summer school with hundreds of kids. And we've had high numbers and then we morphed it some to cut it in half the last few years. But still, it's a pretty large lift, and the bigger reason is we can see ways to be more effective in what we're actually trying to accomplish. So we're now de-partnering special ed and regular ed. Special ed's goals are to prevent regression. So we're now staging programs that are specifically targeted at the needs of those students, whether it's some level of summer schools, our intensive kids that are in all these programs you know so well are definitely going to need some summer school services, half-day, full-day.
Okay.
We are building out a full-day program now, we've been sending some kids to Concord Rec for the afternoon and their needs were too great, it just wasn't really working. So we're going to have a limited number of programs available to kids full day. Again, partnered with the, if they're in the intensive program that they're already in during the school year. Some very targeted tutoring. So very different mindset for special ed, much more focused on IEP goals and needs rather than a generic come be at school for three hours a day. So I think that's going to be much more productive and preventing regression because the service provision will be focused on individual IPs. For general education students, we're looking at our benchmark data and seeing, especially in the area of reading, who's not quite there and what we could do over the summer. Again, more preventative regression, but if you can close a gap, great, right? But we're much more there to make sure the gaps don't get any larger, I think it's similar in mindset. We've decided to go to a completely tutoring-based model, individual tutoring model so that kids getting an hour a week completely targeted where they are and what their deficit skills are, all remote. And we actually started to get some very positive feedback already about that because there were kids, a good number of kids were getting invited, but parents couldn't commit to the three-week structure. And so they were opting out of the support, so a remote option, you can be anywhere and.
Think of that.
Get some Zoom tutoring, you know, once a week for four weeks or three weeks and be able to still have your child get a little bit of help. So models will be new and parents have already been notified and we're hearing back already from them on what their general feedback is and invitations will start to go out right after the first of the year.
So. So, so if you are a gen ed student without an IEP, but you are still significantly behind and so you do still get the invite as always.
Based on the threshold we end up setting.
Right, sure, 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 but, yes, but, oh, okay, I misunderstood that, I thought we were pivoting solely to.
And are you changing the threshold? Is it a different threshold?
Uh, we're still talking about that and looking at, to some extent, you're not surprised we have to back into it a little bit based on the budget and the capacity of which we can offer, you know, services. But I think in the past, we've been able to make a nice marriage between what we have for resources and the number of kids we think could benefit from the service.
And given that this is a new model, do you have a plan to, like, will you share with us how, you know, at the end, how it's, how it's going?
Okay, absolutely. Yeah.
And we're a little nuanced in the language, we don't refer to regression with general education.
Correct, I was just trying to simplify the way we.
No, no, just for, just for my colleagues.
One thing we've really had ongoing dilemmas are to have competing purposes, to say we're trying to catch up regular education kids and close gaps, but the threshold for special education is preventing regression. Those conflict, right? So we are, you know, thinking through our mission in both programs.
That's interesting.
Special ed is, is the law, and then trying to figure out how to best service kids in general education without a conflict.
So is the, just one clarifying, is the question, is the, the special ed services are still all in-person, whether it's half-day or full-day?
Yes.
Only the gen ed has moved to tutoring Zoom.
Okay, yes, with a small asterisk that you might be a student in a certain program and you're qualifying for special education in-person services or programming over the summer. But reading isn't one of your goals, you're not in those programs for reading, you might actually get the opportunity to zoom to the gen ed tutoring. Did you hear what I'm?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can be on an IEP that doesn't call for summer services.
You can be on an IP for the services you need, and then if the benchmark shows you're behind in reading, still get some gen ed support. Because we don't, yeah, we want to exclude you because you're in a program and still have some needs.
So just sort of the same question, so let's say my son or daughter is on an IP. What are the flex, what's the flexibility in terms of participating in the Zoom or tutor situation? In terms of the timing? In terms of the timing during the day?
Yep. So for the special education students, it's going to be programmed services in person.
No, I understand.
Yeah, that won't have a lot of flexibility because we have to schedule that.
Let's say I want my kid to go to a camp.
There may need to be choices made there because we can only service kids on a certain available schedule in person. We can't be completely flexible for that. And that's not a new dilemma for parents. Parents will sometimes say to us, we just want our kids to have fun this summer and it's okay that I'm not going to take the special ed service. Those are individual family choices. Sometimes they mix and match both. They'll do this. Our services are usually only in July, essentially, and they'll do camps the other weeks. It all depends on the individual situation.
So in Weston, they have a very intense morning session and then they then are able to go to the camp.
Yeah, and ours certainly have done that in the past and still could unless they're in a full day program, which we're purposely making full day. So that the kids with the most significant special needs who haven't been successful in camp.
So these run from like seven thirty to nine thirty or something and then they go to. I'm just saying, maybe we could look around because I, I do feel like there's a situation, having had a child do the camp, where they really feel excluded and they get kind of called out for being that kid who's in summer school, which I don't think is appropriate, obviously, but it's in fact, you know, it's fat with kids in separate classrooms. And, you know, sometimes I just think we need to try to do everything we can to include all of our students, give them the opportunities to be with their peers as much as possible, especially in the summer when, uh, you know, this sort of a time off and, you know, take a break. And I know we're trying not to prevent regret. I get all that. All the hard work that's gone into the school year, come back and you have to then catch up for three months. That's, that's not good. So, but I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, we'll see how the new model works. There's, yeah, we'll definitely be collecting feedback from families and everyone involved.
And to that point, sorry, is there flexibility with the Zooms? Can, do you have more flexibility in when you could do it? Like, could you do it at seven thirty in the morning or?
Potentially, it's going to, you know, we have to have a staff member willing to do that. So Kristin's still working through all those logistical parts. I mean, there might be some flexibility, but there'll also have to be set times. We have people available, so.
Yeah.
Trying to do something with a kid who's been in camp all day at four o'clock is probably not going to work too well.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
We're even trying to wake a kid up in the summer at seven thirty, Cynthia. I don't know how that was already. Anyway, but yeah, no, it's tricky. The point is, yeah, the point is.
I'm just watching the clock. I have another meeting at eleven, but we haven't talked to capital.
Do we want to, let's talk about CPS capital as long as we.
What are the implications if we do it properly on the nineteenth? Because if we only.
We can do that as well.
We have less than ten minutes. I'm not sure.
Just have an overall comments.
Yeah, maybe we can kick it off. Let's know that we have some.
Just moving forward, if we can begin thinking about moving it to tier one, tier two, tier three for FY twenty six, how that would look in terms of a budget, how it would look, let's just say if we looked at it this year, I'm not saying we would do it. But how would, what would are the mechanics that would be versus the way we're doing it now? And that's just my only comment. So if we move to the town model.
Yep.
Of doing tier one cash.
Yep.
Tier two, whatever it is, and tier three, whatever, just the numbers and then, what would it look like in terms of how the budget would look? Versus what we're doing now with the nine.
You mean like, I'm, I'm being so literal. Do you mean like visually, like?
No, so right now, what the, the town manager does is she's.
No, 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 I, I know that. But like I'm saying, like, when you say how it would look, like, how our discussions would look and feel? What do you mean? Like what it would look like in a document?
I think what I'm hearing, are you saying like?
The budget, so.
What, what, if you were to take out, if we were to put all of the things that are currently in capital, but would be considered tier one into our operating budget for this budget, what would it look like?
Oh, you mean numbers wise?
Well, what, because I think that.
What the new, like, where we would be.
Kind of would say, okay, we see you need these things in your tier one budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the guideline for the operating budget is three point two six. You know.
I understand.
To this year's budget, even though it might.
Even though it's not going to be part of the discussion.
That's all.
Is that what?
If we don't do it, somebody's going to do it for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I mean, we have the question too about, there's a distinction between, it's a tier, under twenty five thousand. I think their, their position, they're saying is that should be in the operating budget. We could certainly quantify how much that is, but it's not been necessarily budgeted before. So we could, I think, fairly say, well, you know, from apples to apples, that shouldn't necessarily count against us for guideline. That would be my, my viewpoint.
This year, yeah.
And then above twenty five thousand to two fifty, tier two, I believe.
That's tier one.
That's tier one.
Okay, so, so they have an expense portion. Tier one, I mean, if, if they want us to put that in the operating budget, those are big numbers. That's our whole capital.
So it's not, that's what Carrie was trying to say multiple times, Carrie LaFleur, it's not in her operating budget. They just don't borrow on it. So the FinCom is giving her an additional blah to her guideline for her tier one spending.
Okay, and so they have, they have a different line for capital outlay.
Yes.
Which is a separate line that they, they tax for. So it's not borrowed. So we could certainly, I mean, that is basically, we're all right now in tier two. When we do our facility study, we're going to have things that.
Tier one, you mean?
Yeah, we're all in tier one. When we have to do our facilities study, we're going to have items that go to tier two eventually.
Which should be borrowed on. That's, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think we're that, it's just the borrowing that.
Right, and so, right, so it, would it even like look that much different? Like, would, would if it, what we'd really, what it would really be, would we would still present a capital plan inclusive of tier one and tier two? Because tier three goes elsewhere to warrant article or whatnot. And then how we serve that, I guess, like, you know, for lack of a better term, wouldn't it then be on the, the choice of the town, how to finance it? So.
But tier one is, can't be borrowed.
Right, so, so from our perspective, aren't we sort of doing that anyway?
Well, we're borrowing on the nine hundred.
Well, we are not. Yeah, the town is choosing to borrow.
They don't want to borrow. They're telling us that we should not move a nine hundred thousand dollar.
Well, this year, like, for the first time in.
Twenty years, thirty.
However many years. So, right, so like, so just for that distinction, it's, we're not, or the schools are not choosing to borrow. We have been adhering to a formula that has been long established. So, so regardless, wouldn't that choice be the town's choice? So like, so, so if we present the capital, there's nothing we do that says borrow this or don't. We, they've just said, hand us your nine hundred thousand dollar plan, and then they have chosen to borrow it. Or not. Yeah, sometimes they don't, right. So, so, yeah, so certainly, yeah, like, so I, I, I don't think the choice is ours necessarily. The choice is theirs. We're still kind of, again, like, serving the same.
Yeah, I think the only thing that's different is that we would call title, uh, tier one.
Tier one.
Tier one.
Yeah, so we could add like another.
Just adding a category.
Another, like, uh, column to the.
Which is, which is another way of saying apropos of what Anthony was saying, what don't we want to pay an extra twenty five percent premium on?
Well, I don't think that choice would be ours, would it?
I mean, couldn't they just go to free cash for the nine hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, ultimately, it still lands on the people who live in this town. So wherever these decisions come from, the argument doesn't change.
But, but there's nothing materially that we can do to make that impact.
Right. And then we would move to a zero base. They wouldn't give us an allocation anymore. We would just say we need this.
Right, so like, so that would be the difference. So it would never, to your point, like, it would never be embedded in the operating budget. It would always be called out, very similar to what we do now. We could, in fact, to your point, Carrie, add a fifth, you know, final column that said tier one, tier two. That's fine. And then from there, from that document, would the idea then be that the finance committee would see tier one and say, oh, there's, you know, four hundred thousand of this nine hundred thousand is tier one. We therefore need to factor that into the guideline. Is that the idea?
That's what would happen. That's what happens with the town.
Yes.
We go to the town.
Or you have a different case that you're making for why you're not hitting guideline.
Yeah, sure. Right, right, right. Or hopefully the opposite, there would be a case to factor it into that, but regardless. Yeah, no, no, I think that's, you know, that's, that's such a little minutia change to how we're doing things anyway. So I think that's totally.
And even right now, we have like, there are literally two or three things under, three things under twenty five thousand dollars. Everything else is above twenty five.
Yeah. So it would all be in a capital plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. That, yeah, that, that makes sense. And again, I think, again, there isn't.
The nine hundred, we might need five hundred. We might need.
Right.
Three million because we have a tier two.
It's not very different from what Dr. Hunter and I've done, I've done another book, I've done another.
Sorry.
And, you know, we certainly defer to the town piece that they.
And I'll, and I will make sure from a Concord perspective that we put another discussion on for capital on our.
You need to anyway, because, yeah, you've got to vote.
You've got to vote on the nineteenth.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, and we'll be voting numbers that we can continue to work with. We just can't increase them.
Yeah.
Everyone feel like they got there.
One other request, and that is when we get a update on the line item for for CPS, the FTE columns didn't come through.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can print that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
That all adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, we get to our eleven o'clock.